We'll call them in your order. These are actual legislative bills.
The United States of America, to the Republic which stands on a nation under our invisible liberty and justice law.
All right, are there any changes or additions to the agenda? Item four, consent agenda.
I move the board approve that consent agenda is presented.
It's been moved in second to approve the consent agenda as presented in the summary discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Item five personnel, I'm going to give a follow-up reason here for a moment. David is our new principal.
Yeah, just before we start, in case you haven't noticed, we had somewhat of a stranger in our midst. I'd like to introduce for everyone, Garrett Flood. He's the new principal of the NACO youth camp. So he decided to join us today, see how things go. And he's been talking in and out, met with Allen a couple of times, has been out there. So he officially started right after the 4th of July, but he's pretty much already started. So I'd just like to give a welcome to Garrett Flood.
Nice to meet you.
Good to have you here. Item five A, approve hire of Watson Parry as educator.
I move the board approve the hire of Watson Parry as educator slash secretary.
A second. It's been moved in second to approve the hire of Watson Parry as educator slash secretary. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Item five B, approve the hire of Eileen Williams, part-time Spanish teacher. I move the board approve the hire of Eileen Williams, part-time Spanish teacher.
I'll second.
It's been moved in second to approve the hire of Eileen Williams, part-time Spanish teacher. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Item five C, approve the hire of Tamara Bosch, fifth grade teacher.
I move the board approve the hire of Tamara Bosch, fifth grade teacher. A second.
Okay, we've got a contingency here that we need to deal with. Would you like to introduce a contingency?
Oh, I dropped my glasses, so I'm trying to squint this. You may see. Let me catch up on this one. I don't see contingents on this one.
Okay, let me start over. I move the board approve the hire of Tamara Bosch, fifth grade teacher contingent upon background check.
I'll still second.
It's been moved in second to approve the hire of Tamara Bosch, fifth grade teacher contingent upon a background check. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Item five D, approve hire Scott Smith, cross-country coach.
I move the board approve the hire of Scott Smith, cross-country coach.
I'll second. It's been moved in second to approve the hire of Scott Smith, cross-country coach. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Item five E, approve the hire of Tucker Glenn, JV boys basketball coach.
I move the board approve the hire of Tucker Glenn, JV boys basketball coach.
I'll second. It's been moved in second to approve the hire of Tucker Glenn, JV boys basketball coach. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Item five F, approve the hire of Hannah Higginbotham, middle school volleyball coach. I move the board approve the hire of Hannah Higginbotham, middle school volleyball coach.
A second.
It's been moved in second to approve the hire of Hannah Higginbotham, middle school volleyball coach. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Item six, public comment. We have one person signed up for comment. Anybody?
I just want to give, the discussion about dual sports comes up, I would like to be very much a part of that discussion because I think it adds a coach, a teacher, and a parent. And I just want to be a part of it that comes up again, on the dual sports.
All right, thank you. No one else has signed up, we don't necessarily have that as a formality to sign up. So if anybody else would like to come at this time, feel free to do so. Okay, moving on. Item seven, approve board policy 6700.
I move the board approve policy 6700.
I'll second.
It's been moved in second to approve policy 6700. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Item eighty-eight, approve summer teaching contracts for Russell Hickman and Jean-Paul Thompson, youth camp summer school. I move the board approve summer teaching contracts for Russ Hickman and Jean-Paul Thompson.
A second.
It's been moved in second to approve summer teaching contracts for Russ Hickman and Jean-Paul Thompson. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Approve non-represented salaries for 2016-17.
I move the board approve the non-represented staff salaries for 2016-17.
A second.
It's been moved in second to approve non-represented staff salaries for 2016-17. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Approve out-of-area teaching assignments for K through 12 teachers.
I move the board approve out-of-area teaching assignments for K through 12 teachers for the 2016-17 school year.
I'll second. It's been moved in second to approve out-of-area teaching assignments for K through 12 teachers for the 2016-17 school years. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Item seven D, approve expenditure of up to $750,000 covered play area multi-purpose building.
I move the board approve expenditures up to $750,000 for the covered play area and multi-purpose building.
I'll second.
It's been moved in second to approve expenditures up to $750,000 for the covered play area multi-purpose building. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Approve purchase of 16 replacement computers at K through 12 school not to exceed $28,000. I move the board approve the purchase of 16 replacement computers for the K through 12 school not to exceed $28,000.
A second.
It's been moved in second to approve the purchase of 16 replacement computers for the K through 12 school not to exceed $28,000. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Approve purchase of servers and replaceable laptops at NACO youth camp not to exceed $18,500.
I move the board approve the purchase of servers and replacement laptops at NACO youth camp not to exceed $18,500.
A second.
It's been moved in second to approve this purchase of servers and replaceable laptops at NACO youth camp not to exceed $18,500. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Item seven G, pre-purchase of 15 replacement student computers at NACO youth camp not to exceed $26,500.
I move the board approve the purchase of 15 replacement student computers at NYC not to exceed $26,500.
I'll second. It's been moved in second to approve the purchase of 15 replacement student computers at NACO youth camp not to exceed $26,500. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Item seven H, approve payment of TCLP Mandarin teacher for 2016-17, $32,000. I move the board approve payment for the TCLP Mandarin teacher for the 2016-17 school.
A second.
It's been moved in second to approve payment for TCLP Mandarin teacher for the 2016-17 school year. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Item seven I, approve common booster activities for 2016-17.
I move the board approve the common booster activities for 2016-17.
I'll second. It's been moved in second to approve the common booster activities for 2016-17. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Item seven J, approve contracts with EST 112 for student services.
I move the board approve contracts with EST 112 for student purposes.
A second.
It's been moved in second to approve contracts with EST 112 for student services. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries.
She's got it on here.
Item seven K, approve boards legislative representative to your channel.
I move the board appoint Bud Strange as legislative representative for 2016 through 2018.
Second. It's been moved in second to appoint Bud Strange as legislative representative for 2016 through 2018. Are there any other nominations? Is there anyone who'd like to do?
It's a happy.
Such an arduous town.
He did such a good job.
Very well, I would like to move motion to close nominations. I move the board close nominations.
A second.
It's been moved in second to close nominations. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. All right, now the matter of appointing Bud Strange as legislative representative for 2016 through 2018. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Congratulations.
Item ninety-eight, track and field and baseball. That's quick, it could take 12 minutes, only to get to this point. So, how about baseball, come on up here. Okay, come on, hook shot. Well, we have two, one, three, I guess, two coaches, and we have one player. We're really fortunate this year, we had a great baseball season, boys ended up third place at the state tournament, inches away basically from being the state championship. Obviously high expectations for next year, we don't want to curse anyone. There was only, you know, one senior on the team, I don't want to put the curse of the Warriors upon him, no curse or anything, but we did just want to take this time to recognize you for your efforts. And I know the 910th of the team is gone because there's also basketball team camp going on, and we get to our ladies and talk about them, but I'll say that either because they're often in, that's pretty much how it is in life at a small school, you round up once more, you start the summer week or the next quarter, as soon as that's over, we're going to have some football camps, you know, and start football, and we go woo-woo move. So, we're glad you were able to make it tonight, we have a couple of clocks for our coaches, usually we don't get the little bits or anything, so we'll go and take care of the coaches here tonight. Just so everyone can see, and then I'll make this for everybody, says the NACO president of the school district board of directors who'd like to recognize, here, Chris Normand, as assistant coach of the NACO college baseball team that finished third place in the state tournament in 2016. So, you may have a little shot here. Okay, here, let's do a better one. Okay. And, not to beat the drum, head coach, Mr. Randy Lindstrom, and he does say the same thing, so.
Yes.
All right. The NACO president of the Valley School District Board of Directors, who'd like to recognize that Randy Lindstrom, as head coach of the NACO college baseball team that finished third place in the state tournament in 2016. So.
I'm going to say something, it'll probably kill me for, but I don't know that it was published here at the district level, but, but there was a, there was an All-State vote that went on at the statewide level. Donnie Edwards made All-State for the 1B classification, and Randy Lindstrom was named Coach of the Year for All-State 1B.
Say anything one more back, is that the list?
Yeah, I'll forward on the list, but.
You've got another trophy tonight.
Yeah, so Donnie Edwards was, I don't know that he was first-team All-State, but he was definitely in the All-State list, there was about 30 kids, I think, that were listed.
And that's not 1B, 2B?
For 1B and 2B, yeah. So he's kind of in that pool of two-class seniors.
And he was Coach of the Year?
Coach of the Year, yeah, statewide.
For 1B, 2B?
For 1B, 2B.
1B, 2B, yeah.
One C.
That's how high.
Awesome. We've got some ladies players too, that were also, these are the, we had first-team first, Kinder Wiegert and Taylor Eaton, and Arnold Mension went to Taylor Ford and Kayla Matthews, and the coach that, coaches of that team were, uh, the American footballer, Kayla Ford, or Kayla, I'm sure. Baseball, as we talked about a little bit, there were also some all-league honors, which that information did make it to the list. Yeah, so for first team, we had Donnie Edwards, Cole Larmen, Ethan Hunsch, and Carson, who's there about, so appreciate you guys coming. And then Arnold Mension went to Jacob Speerbeck, and coaches of that team, obviously, were maybe, so it was really a great spring.
Yeah.
For all of our teams.
That's a great finish.
Yes, that's awesome. So, track and field, if I can have different stock up here, and talk a little bit about track, Cody, our senior.
Thank you.
Senior was able to represent, I guess you don't need to go to summer league, huh?
No, it's just me.
So, we had several students, student athletes make it to track, backing up a little bit, our girls' track team, the district champions, and our boys were second, our coaches obviously, Coach Damien Smith, we'll talk about that later. And our state awards, we had several students placed at stake, and many of these are, you know, freshmen relatively new to track, we had Sean McNamee, who's fourth in the javelin, maybe it's Ethan, the 100 hurdles, Cody up here, Ethan Shotwood, Parker, who's a freshman, Ethan Hobel, that's Parker, who's perfectly, Sophie Speerbeck, Ethan Hobel also, Roger Estes, with the discus, and then Ellie, who also received a special state recognition. And there, she was third in the 100 hurdles, fifth in the 300, and seventh triple jump. So, represented very well, I think about 50 kids in Alabama, so there's somewhere in the way to various names, but there were more kids being just recognizing the placers tonight, but the future for our track team was very good also, a lot of freshmen who have to grow. Without further ado, we want to recognize our track coaches also. So first up, we have Scott Smith. I think I'll make this. It says, Scott Smith, on behalf of the NACO president of the school district board of directors, you are hereby recognized and appreciated for the outstanding performance of your track and field athletes at the 2016 state tournament in Washington, and you've got four awards. Thank you for your years of service and dedication to the track and field program. Now, how many years is that been?
I don't, I don't count, I think it's started in.
That's to be more than 20?
No.
The track, the track is.
We started in 2002 together. I thought we had worked on that.
Guess we've just been around a while now.
Be careful.
Well, there's energy. And Coach Dave, who has been so great.
I know.
You're still alive. Yeah, I know.
There's a brandy and a burger, Steve.
They're all here.
Yeah.
So, to you, Kevin, on behalf of the NACO president of the school district board of directors, you are hereby recognized and appreciated for the outstanding performance of your track and field athletes in the 2016 state tournament in Washington, and you want to, thank you for your years of dedication and service to the track and field program.
The team that always stayed consecutive points, I think it's, it was 76 or 75. So we've been in there every, but my first year was Maryland, you were June.
Eighty-three. Let us count them.
So I think you was my first year.
We don't know why it's three where. That's okay for you.
Yeah, you don't, you're perfect. You were 18 and so was you. Thank you for that.
Um, just quickly, update here, bars of Mandarin program, where am I, off, not here. I think I have another slide for that, so I'm going to jump around and match my slides, I guess. We still have my heard in on Scott Zoo, and it's basically, all the paperwork's in, we're waiting on our state department to communicate with us, but we kind of assume it's going to happen, because they have a pool, it's not, but we don't assume anything. We're getting one teacher from the college board, it has been determined, now in China, they usually do last name first, so it would be nine, technically, and a halftime teacher from the TCLP, and that's what you saw with the name. That's my Mandarin update. This kind of captures the year review, I don't know if you can see this, but this is a picture, I believe, of Karen Werco's first grade class, and I, I think there might be a scattered award number in this picture, but I'll let you see, you guys might have seen that picture before.
What year you mean, a picture? It's like 70.
It doesn't show up there, but I hardly recognize Karen in that picture. Obviously, our awesome graduating class of 2016, which we have.
Not my face to go.
Right? Third place, baseball, they have a crappy faces, but, you know, we're very proud of it, we did a great job. This was our girls' district championship, right on our field here. Mark Swanson, he's retiring, this was her retirement party at the youth camp, Alan's retiring, his party was camel party, so he's, he's already ready to start hunting season, I think. Couple pictures, our picture from the state track, we had two winners in this event, two placers, and I just love this picture, this was from our evening of excellence, but if there wasn't so many lights in here, it just really captures, or basically, just a lot of energy in that picture, it's really cute to see that whole class up on the stage and getting their ones, and so proud of themselves, so, just a little snapshot to end the year. This is a little different slide than you see, but it just summarizes, I'm here in enrollment picture, the tall bars, the tall record bars are the K-12, our public school enrollment, really held by three or four all-year, we saw very little movement in our enrollment this year. The light blue bars at the bottom are CBA, that's a typical pattern, what usually happens is the numbers shrink a little bit near the end of the year, because that's technically, it's a home-based program, it's homeschool, they work with their own base, so near the end of the year, a lot of them didn't finish up early, maybe should come back in the fall, but it's different than traditional brick-and-mortar systems, where they're 180 days, and that's, you know, how it is, this works, and one that different, it's a lot more flexible. And then the light green is the youth camp, and if you remember, we were budgeted at 70 students this year, we averaged about 78, so that's part of the reason why we were going to see a lot of youth camp purchases, because there was more money than we had hired for staffing, because every year, it's sort of a juggling act, because they give you a number, you stack that number, and then you never have that many kids, you either have less, and you're trying to recoup money that you spent that didn't come in, or you have too much, and then you have to spend it, or the state will take it away. So, that's just how it works out there, they get about twice as much funding per student compared to the public schools, so, and probably the summer's spent now, and I think we're in a government process, I don't know, 50 purchase orders or more. It leads to a lot of paperwork and a lot of time, I suppose you consider that in the process. Anyway, we will see more of these as the months go along through the summer. Let's report. Again, these will last a little month, so we're in June, but the reporting is always out for the previous, so this is for 12 months. Kind of just a point to note here, on the revenue side, this is what percentage has been collected so far, so most of these are going to be 75, and some of the lower ones, this is where we put our contingency, who were to get grants, so, you're never going to see 100% there in the revenue side, because we would have to get about a million dollars in grants, and we're about $300,000, so we're not, you know, we haven't had a million. Same thing goes on the expenditures then, you know, most of these are in the range they should be, but if you look down here, where it says other programs, you're up to grant capacity, so this is the counterpart to the revenue side, so you have to take it in to spend it out, so those ones aren't ever going to quote be at 100%, because, you know, we have to build capacity somewhere, if we get grants, and we won't always get those. So that's what I was pointing out there. Second page, this just shows, we're on the same page, that's not right. This just basically shows the status of the accounts through May. Most of these never change, like the district's checking, as soon as we write a check, we have to make ownership, we have to keep the exact amount in there, so we can keep, you know, good checks and balances. Right now, our fund balance is about a million five, this hasn't, doesn't show yet, the board took, board took action about a month ago, and moved 500,000 over to capital projects for the covered play area, multi-purpose room, so you will see a drop in the ending fund balance, and also, because like I mentioned, the campus spending gap, so that won't stay there, but hopefully it will recover in time.
Are we still regretting to start out next year about the same, like we started out this year?
We think so, I just talked to the business manager today, and right now, we show a little bit more FTE than we did last time, so we kind of have to go through, because when they do the budget, they take the previous years, and then it carries over, and then you have to go in and make your edits, sometimes it doesn't carry over, it's clearly a computer process that makes it a little more difficult. I, I don't think it'll be at an end for sure, but, you know, it can be neat, I mean, you've got different things going on right now too, but you could alter that. It should still be in good shape overall. This, what is about the news? I don't know, that's pretty new. I did want to, I have a couple of thank yous and no worries. Most of you are probably well aware that Ed Ingleson has been helping us out a significant amount out of the bus garage, and I called him and told him I wanted to talk about it, I don't know who told him, you know, if Ed had answered the phone, he would have said, "All right," before he could even explain to yourself. He's totally true to form 100% of the time, but, you know, you just have to love him, because if, if there's a need to fill, and there's someone, you know, you need to do it, he, he'll do it, he's the guy, I mean, he said, "Hey, you can have me all the way to the gym, if you need me," you know, I'll be there for you. I didn't even have to ask, and, you know, I just, I don't want him to go forgotten in this whole process, because we could have really been up without him. The other person is Larry Ridgman, Larry's one of the bus drivers, and Larry really spoke. The other person is Larry Bridnall, Larry's one of the bus drivers, and Larry really stepped up too, and started helping us out with all the scheduling. Because you have your bus routes, and you have your mechanic part, but there's another big part about his scheduling. And you know, in the spring, like baseball, for example, you guys know, you need to have a game, two games a week, and it turns into four games a week, and you thought it was Monday, but now it's Tuesday, and it rained out, so you thought it was a home game, now you're going to a walk-up. That's, that's a big demand on a transportation supervisor, to try to get it all figured out, are you taking a bus or a van, and if it's vans, now you need to, because can't haul bomb on one van, and every week, actually every day, we would get an update saying, okay, this is the event, these are the drivers, and this is what they're taking. And that's a lot of extra time, so if they did that so we might just recognize how many of those, now, they're, they're getting down already, so about that in a thousand, I recognize, and it's, it's okay, it's a lot.
Lisa Woods Pearl, Mrs. Spats.
He's back now?
Did he?
Yeah, he's been back for probably a week and a half or so, looks good. As a, most of them do, but it's just gonna take some time, but he's coming around. Let's see, quickly, summer play area, architects have come out, they've done some additional measuring. We, I guess that's really that on that part, and we should be bringing the contract here shortly for approval, right now, we're just sort of talking about it and looking at other documents. We have to actually, our official, you know, contract approved with the architect, so we're working on that, they've come out and looked at the site a lot of times. That's really it for that part. Just kind of things we have coming up, we have we have to get the budget approved, the normal board meeting in July is when we typically have done that. So we're gonna talk about this, but I want to ask the board how we would like to do that and at what time. I think in the past, we've done that at five thirty or five, on the same day as the regular board meeting, you know, that's up for discussion. Also, it's June and the end of the year, but obviously, the board is to do a self-evaluation, so we, we'd also talk about scheduling the time for that. Board goals are due, superintendent's goals are due, so ideally, we would talk to about those during the summer before the school year starts, because I know the school year starts, the principals and teachers, and their goal settings are kind of all theoretically close together. So I guess my question to the board would be, as far as handling the board workshop for the self-evaluation and the budget hearing, you have any thoughts on how you would like those to be scheduled? How much time do you think? Might be for all of that.
Well, you may have noticed that Lisa suggested some changes to our goals for the following year, basically just creaking on, so we have to make sure. And I don't know if everybody had a chance, but feelings about I think there's probably some things that we need to pop today, but nothing huge, no. In my opinion, it's nothing that we should try to schedule a separate workshop for, with a facilitator or anything like that, I think it's a make it up there. And we could do the whole thing as a special meeting. I had a bridge line, I think we could do the budgets, our discussion on budgets, and our discussion on on our evaluation of goals from last year, and people's goals from here, we could do the whole thing at the same time, we're going to do that. We'll get it in.
How much time does the business manager, was he like half hour last year?
I think it was about forty-five minutes. Probably be, I wouldn't think it'd be any more than, than it was last year. Some of you were hurt for three times, some two times, I think you guys actually came on the board right after that, yeah. I would think, Chuck was saying, would you, would you want us to do the budget hearing first? So we have to put a legal notice in the paper for the budget hearing, so just my personal preference would be to do the budget hearing first, because when we do your posting in the paper, we say, you know, we have a budget hearing at five o'clock or whatever time.
And we also have, can't be in here especially for that purpose. For the purpose of that, when we come back, maybe, so we did that first, and then we somehow couldn't squeeze in
Right.
the goals part, we could defer that part.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that would be easier to defer the goals than the budget, because once you put the posting out there, you pretty much have to run with it. Need timelines, and get the post. I guess we would do two special meetings.
I don't know, I don't know, let's just do one, because if you do two, then we're gonna have to start that.
Start, stop.
If you do just one
Wouldn't be in the ad, wouldn't have to be in the ad necessarily, it'd just be our regular, put it on our webpage and post office.
We have our goal list.
Your goal's second.
Yeah, but have it all covered, covered every little special meeting. Okay, we good with that?
So just you can drag, five o'clock would be a special meeting for the budget, and then sometime thereafter.
Yeah, five o'clock would be the special meeting, with two agenda items, huh? And then we're gonna be at six thirty two.
It's
Guess it's us, five eleven, board member reports with future agenda. In that case, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move the board adjourn. It's been moved and seconded to adjourn the meeting, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?